I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For everyone, please be man standing. We'd like to ask Vancilist Fenn Johnson, please come and give us a prayer.
Will you bow your heads, please? Father God Almighty, we just thank you for the honor and we thank you for the privilege to be able to come and boldly approach the throne of grace. We come in no other name but the name of Jesus and we come because we do have petitions that we wish to leave with you. And Lord, when we leave them with you, we go away believing and having faith that you have heard us. And with that confidence, we can go on and live productive lives. So Lord, this is our prayer for the city of Inkster, for the administrators and for all of those that are part of Inkster, that they will be encouraged to ever look to you for direction, for answers, for solutions. And oh God, we just thank you because you've been good to us. There have been tragedies that have been taking place all over the land, but you've been good to us. And Lord, we want to thank you for that. Oh, we know we've lost loved ones. We've had times of grieving and there are those that are grieving even now. But Lord, you said blessed are those that mourn, for they shall be comforted. And so we have many witnesses, even in this room tonight, that can say, "You're a mighty good comforter." So Lord, we're asking you to keep your loving arms around us. Keep us ever moving forward in the matchless name of Jesus. Amen.
Good call.
Mayor Nolan, Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Shizam.
Present.
We have seven present tonight and we do have a quorum.
Everyone have a chance to look at the agenda? Any additions, deletions? We're going to add one presentation by Mr. Ken Cole under the ICANN presentation. Anything else we need to add? Do we have a motion?
I should accept the agenda as presented.
Right. If you move and support, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. First presentation of an ICANN presentation from Councilwoman Sandra K. Watley.
Hello, Inkster. How are you tonight? No breath to hear.
Chuck, give her the microphone.
We're in Detroit, though. Well, see, I was here earlier tonight and I went through this three times. Because I said, "I want a mess up," okay?
Troy, I don't want that there yet.
Okay, does everyone hear me or do I need this?
Yes.
Who said yes? Okay, well, tonight I am here to talk to you about ICANN. How many of you have heard of ICANN before? Yay, like that. Okay, it stands for the Inkster Citizen Action Network. And ICANN is interested, involved, and invested in the city of Inkster, okay? Also, we believe that ICANN, you can become a part of a solution to a lot of the problems you have, we have, in the city of Inkster by joining ICANN. Now, ICANN is one of those organizations where you don't have to live on a special block. You don't have to belong to a special organization. All you have to have is a deep love for the city of Inkster. You don't even have to live in Inkster to be an ICANN member, although we like you to, but you don't have to be. So, ICANN, Inkster Citizen Action Network. A brief historic beginning is ICANN was established or founded in 2002 by then attorney Byron Nolan and Sandra Watley. It's a grassroots organization that was established in 2012 in response to the unreasonable water bills that the residents of Inkster were getting. Our goal was to establish a $10,000 legal fund to begin litigation against the city. After a successful challenge in 2003 that resulted in a water bill credit for 303, a water bill credit for 8,425 residents of $303.78, the group decided to stay together as a force dedicated to achieving parity and equality with regard to governmental and municipal inequities. We are fiercely dedicated to the aforementioned effort and we will continue to represent the community's interests in associated endeavors, including assistance with reading and understanding water meters and the bills. And we also have accompanied residents to meetings with the water officials when they had a problem. We also, during our litigation, received in the interim a water rate reduction. Try saying "water rate," "water rate," "water rate" three times. A reduction in the rate while they were waiting for the lawsuit to be adjudicated. Investing in Inkster's future. To meet our initiatives, a decision was made to offer an annual membership card. Now, that was as a funding source. It was determined that if the 8,425 recipients of the water lawsuit reimbursement of $303.78 reinvested $20 annually, we could raise over $168,000 annually. And if the population of Inkster at that time joined the ICANN effort, we could raise close to a quarter of a million dollars annually to spend as the members chose to do so, thus providing community benefits that the city no longer funded. $20 annual membership is less than you spend on liquor, Lotto, cigarettes, hair, and nails, okay? And we all look good with our nails and hair and stuff like that, so we know what it costs us to end up looking that way. But $20 annually, and you can do so much for the community. Now, I'm going to continue and show you what we have done as a group. We have gotten with the business owners in the community and they provide ICANN, they provide discounts to ICANN members. So in addition to the community funding source your membership provided, over 30-plus local businesses have joined ICANN as discount providers. Once you have obtained your membership card, present it to a participating business and receive a discount on the goods and services that they provide. Following is a list of our current providers. We have Applewood Coney Island, Big Four Cab, Big D's Catering, Bishop's Auto Wrecking, Buried Treasures, Cannon's Warehouse, Corden's Candy Carousel, Craig Electric, Couturier Massage and Bodywork, Dorsey Williams Construction, Farmer's Market, D's Farmer's Market, First Choice Windows, Fisherman's Net, Gabbert's Concrete, Gibbs Cleaning Service, Golani Dental Center, Hairstyles by Thomas, Hollywood Pharmacy, Hydro Hut, and Inkster Tire. We also have Love's Famous Barbecue, Marsail's Unisex Salon, Murray's Real Estate Services, Pearson Insurance Agency, Rainbow Cleaners, Rich Wall Custom Cabinetry, Riquet's Boutiques and Gifts. Scooby Doo B' Doo is owned by a little guy. He's 11, I believe. And what he does is he'll clean up after your dog. That's what Scooby Doo B' Doo is. You have the Stardust Lounge who participates, Sweet Bee, 315 North, Unity Tax, Value Battery, and Young Breed Productions. Now, once you get your membership card, we will give you a list of those discounts, okay? And every person that participates has been given this ICANN oval to put in their business so you'll know they're a business that participates with ICANN. We have additional services. Some of our members, or most of our members, are block sponsors. What a block sponsor is, is that someone who will go to their neighbors with information. Say you, we have something we want our membership to know about, or we just want the general community. Well, the block sponsor will go to just the people on their block, or you can take two blocks if you're, you know, really aggressive. And they give that information to everyone on their block. This serves a purpose of you get a little exercise, you get to know the people in your community, you get to become neighbors. We have member t-shirts that are available. When we did our cleanups, we provided the contractor-grade garbage bags, gloves, tools for the cleanups. We have Operation Civic Pride, which is headed up by Deborah Owens. We have demonstrated how the new water meters work and how they were read. And this is a rendering that one of our members did so people would understand how to work the meter and what to expect from it. We provide water conservation tips. Like if you're washing vegetables, and don't throw the water away. Save it, because you can water plants with it and you can do a number of other things. Also, when you're thinking about flushing the toilet and serving water, because every time you do that, that's 600, that's 6, 6 and 1/2 gallons of water. Now, if you do that 12 or 15 times a day, look at what you're wasting. And you know how much our water was costing at that time, okay? We do donations to local events and we have laminated business cards so that they don't get all balled up in your wallet and stuff, okay? These are some ICANN-sponsored events. ICANN sponsored the 2016 Memorial Day Parade. That was our members. We said, "Do you all want to put on the Memorial Day Parade?" Because we hadn't had one in so long. The membership said, "Yes," and that's what we did, because we're invested in the city of Inkster. These booklets, and I have a couple of them up there if you'd like to see them later on. And we did, the following year, we took the pictures from the parade of the first year and we made a photo album. So these things are available too. And like I said, this is a project that we decide to do. So when you spend your money, we vote on what we're going to do with that money. We put on a Veterans Resource Fair. We also have community cleanups. And the item you see on the left there is what we put on doors when we're coming into a specific area to clean up. It says, "Join the club," and then it says, "We will be in your area on," gives the date of the cleanup, from what time to what time, and you're invited to come out and join us and help clean up your neighborhood. I believe Officer Lebo and I put quite a few of those out in Parkside when we were working that, yep. So another thing is the Cleanup Coalition joined forces with the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Ordnance Department, DPW, and the area residents when we did the Parkside Cleanup, okay? That's another event that we do, okay? Next, the Cleanup Coalition completed these projects in 2016 along with a combined effort with Clean Sweep, Tony Bailey, and working with them to help clean up the community, okay? We also provide the Eye Candy Convoy. What the Eye Candy Convoy provides is those children that are unable to go to the party that they have at the rec center or don't have the transportation to go out into the community and do what they need to do, like collect tons of candy so they'll be, yes, so they'll be hyper for the rest of their lives. What we do is we provide the Eye Candy Convoy. What that means is our members fill up their cars with candy, they get in it, and they go to various neighborhoods such as Parkside, such as Lamon, such as Dindie, such as Canterbury, and we let the kids come out and trick or treat from our cars. So it's a line, and I have a ball every year I do that. I really do. I enjoy it so much because they're so cute. And you know why they're so cute? Take a look. Look at the little minions. Aren't they precious? And those are people that are in the convoy that help us with it. So we enjoy doing the Eye Candy Convoy and don't be scared. You can come join. We'd love to have you in that convoy. So, do you want to become part of the solution? If you can, if you want to become part of the solution, you can host an ICANN opener. Now, what that is, is similar to the old Tupperware parties they used to have. You, okay? I don't use Tupperware, but it's like the old Tupperware parties they used to have. What you do is you can invite your neighbors and friends and invite us out to put on a presentation for you. Or if you have a club or an organization, you can invite us out and we can put on a presentation for you. And if we have five people who sign up from that meeting, the host or hostess's membership is free, okay? So, I like this model because it says everything it should say about ICANN. Never go begging for that which you can do yourself, you know? We have the wherewithal to do what we need to do for our community. And at $20 a piece, like I said, liquor, Lotto, cigarettes, hair, and nails, okay? We can do this. As a unified community, we can accomplish enormous feats that enrich the quality of life for our residents. Moving forward, our goal is to provide transportation services. If we were raising $168,000 a year, you think we can't buy a bus, okay? And if we were raising that kind of money, do you think we can't provide employment? We can't get a resident? We can't hire a resident to drive that bus? We'd like to also select a charity to annually donate a percentage of our yearly membership collection. The opportunities and advantages are limited, are limitless, if we just work together. Everybody talks about unity, but very few of us show it. So, we'd like you to contact us. This is our information. And we'd like you to join us, as quite a few of our notables have. Of course, the mayor is a member of ICANN. Most of the council peoples are a member of ICANN. Representative Jewel Jones is a member of ICANN. Senator David Kneecik is a member of ICANN. And in fact, he just made a very, a very healthy donation to ICANN because he said it was such a worthwhile cause. So we'd like all of you to think of us as a worthwhile cause and come out and join us. In fact, how many members of ICANN do we have out here right now? Oh, by the way, sir, it's time to renew. Okay, oh yeah, go ahead, show them. She's showing her card. All right, I'd like to thank you so much for your kind attention during this presentation. And if you're interested in joining ICANN, thank you. Oh, I forgot to mention David. He's a member of ICANN.
We gotta renew, uh... Somebody head grab the lights. Thank you, Officer Wall. Though you had to beat the people off to get to the lights with it. All right, well, thank you, Councilwoman Wiley. Next, we're gonna have a presentation from Ken Cole, who is our lobbyist up in Lansing. Come on up, Mr. Cole.
Mayor Nolan, members of the Honorable Inkster City Council, municipal employees, city businesses, and loyal residents. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for this opportunity to report with Governmental Consultant Services Incorporated, better known as simply GCSI, has been working under the state capitol for the city of Inkster. For the record, my name is Kenneth Cole. I'm a partner at our firm and Inkster's lead lobbyist in Lansing. I guess I should first say to Councilwoman Watley, "Sign me up. I'm in." I hope to cover quite a few topics this evening, and thus I'm gonna get right to my prepared remarks to allow ample time for questions. But I would be remiss if I did not pause to again thank you and thank you again for your continued trust in GCSI for your state advocacy needs. It's an assignment that we take seriously and have been honored to field since 2007, scoring numerous appropriations and public policy victories for your beloved city, some of which are itemized in Attachment A of this report. If you look in your pocket there, I have quite a few little attachments, but Attachment A will itemize quite a few, you know, victories that we've, but I'm not, I'm not... I wish to begin my presentation this evening talking about the event that promises to dominate discourse in Lansing this year, the election. As you may already know, the 2018 primary is August 7th, the general is November 6th, and every seat in the Republican-controlled state government is up for grabs. Those are the offices of Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, all 38 state senate seats, and all 110 state house seats. Specifically, Michigan's term limitations law precludes Governor Rick Snyder, Attorney General Bill Shutey, Secretary of State Ruth Johnson from seeking reelection to their respective executive offices. Meanwhile, in the legislature, where Republicans control the Michigan Senate by a margin of 27 to 11 and the House 63 to 47, the term limits law prohibits 50 lawmakers from seeking reelection. Simply put, that means that 33%, 1 in 3, 1 in 3, of the members of the 100th Michigan Legislature will be new to the job come January of 2019. Adding to this commotion at the Capitol is some first and second-term state representative's decision to forego reelection to the House to either run for state senate or one of the three open seats in Michigan's congressional delegation in wake of former Congressman John Conyers' unexpected retirement and Congressmen Sander Levin and Dave Trotz opting not to seek reelection. Notably, Michigan's 13th Congressional District, long represented by Congressman Conyers, includes the city of Inkster and has attracted a crush of candidates, including three city members of the legislature. Suffice it to say that lawmakers this year hoping to gain political advantage will keep close tabs on how their colleagues/potential opponents vote on legislation. I mention the latter to sensitize you all to the volatile environment in which GCSI labors daily on behalf of Inkster. It's an assignment made even more challenging by the dwindling number of state lawmakers and likely political allies from Wayne County. In all, 27 current lawmakers, all but three of them Democrats, hail from Michigan's largest county. Among them are your own State Senator David Kneecik, who's a Democrat from neighboring Dearborn Heights, and Inkster's own Representative Jewel Jones, I think I saw him sitting in the back there, also a Democrat, who by the way, both of them represent your city with intelligence and integrity at the state capitol. They do you proud. Juxtapose that tally of 27 to the 33 state lawmakers from Wayne County 20 years ago during the 1997-98 legislative session. Consider too that the number of state lawmakers from Wayne County may shrink even more come 2020 when new political lines are drawn in the legislative redistricting process. Let me make this emphatically clear. Wayne County's diminishing clout at the Capitol is a troubling trend that makes winning policy and budget battles for Inkster all more challenging because in the words of the late State Senator David Holmes of Detroit, "Ain't no substitute for votes." It's a phenomenon that also renders clear the significance of the voters-not-politicians reform effort. In December, this grassroots group submitted to the State Bureau of Elections some 450,000 petition signatures to put before the electorate this November a proposal to vest an independent commission with the decennial task of redrawing district lines. If you look at Attachment B there, I've got some information that describes the initiative in greater detail. But at its crux, this effort seeks to depoliticize the redistricting process that currently sees partisan state lawmakers draw the lines. GCSI will keep you abreast of this effort as it progresses. I want to move on to the state budget and grant procurement. Governor Snyder on February 7th presented the executive spending plan for the state's 2019 state fiscal year. The proposal is based in part on state economists' projection at the January 11th Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference that Michigan will have nearly $10.4 billion to support its general fund obligations next fiscal year, as delineated in Attachment C of the report. I should mention here that the entire budget, the total budget is about $55 billion if you include restricted and federal resources. Also at that conference, State Budget Director Al Pachoca, he disclosed that we finished the last fiscal year in September 30th with roughly $280 million in lapsed money. That is money that's been budgeted but not spent by state departments that returns unattached to the general fund. For Inkster, the governor's proposed budget would largely maintain the status quo, with the notable exception of road spending. Inkster now receives roughly $2 million to maintain municipal roads and bridges, as delineated in Attachment D. You'll see, I think I skipped over Attachment C, which was basically just the consensus revenue estimating report. But if you look at Attachment D, you'll see what your city gets in road money. It's just under $2 million. The city would see those monies increase to an estimated $3.4 million in FY19 if the legislature accepts Governor Snyder's recommendation for a $325 million bump in general fund support for roads. Clearly, GCSI will lobby for this prospective 70% increase in Inkster road money, which the governor wants to subsidize with the aforementioned lapsed money. Without a doubt, most of Inkster's state support derives from the revenue sharing program. Attachment E shows the city is expected to receive $3.5 million in revenue sharing aid in FY2019, same as this year pursuant to the governor's proposal. That accounts for roughly 25% of Inkster's $13.4 million budget and explains in great detail why GCSI again will vigorously defend this program in the coming year. Even though the 2019 executive budget is largely flat, you all should know that GCSI is lobbying to include select priorities for Inkster in the spending plan, namely earmarks for surveillance cameras to augment public safety in city neighborhoods, a new boiler at the venerable Booker T. Dozier Recreation Center, and a band shelf for summer concerts at Inkster Park. As you know, Mayor Nolan, you and I had a conversation and we tried diligently to engineer a trade for those items last year during debate over the no-fault insurance reform. I'll elaborate on that contentious legislative effort in a bit, but suffice it to say the trade failed. Regrettably, that may portend our chances to win support for these earmarks in the traditional budget process too. Indeed, this ain't gonna be an easy lift, given, one, Governor Snyder's resolved to leave $1 billion in the rainy day fund, and, two, the myriad of spending pressures on the state budget that include, one, the cost of the increase in the personal exemption on state income tax forms. Just passed last week, this tax cut is gonna nick the state general fund and the school aid fund collectively by about $176 million a year come 2021. Another spending pressure is the 2015 roads funding plan, which commits $1.7 billion in general fund to, in general fund money, rather, to infrastructure improvements from FY2019 through FY2022. Homestead tax exemptions that will cost the general fund $831 million from FY2019 through FY2022. Mega tax credits, which will cost the general fund anywhere from $500 to $600 million a year through FY2031. And Obamacare, which still faces an uncertain future in Washington DC, such that Michigan could end up spending more on the program through which more than 600,000 Michigan residents receive health insurance. That is why GCSI again is scouring state government for grants to subsidize the aforementioned earmarks. Attachment F itemizes some of the successes that GCSI and Inkster have met with scoring such cash awards in the past. With apologies to the Staples Singers, let's do it again. I know Representative Jones probably doesn't get that reference given. To that end, you should note that in... you should note that in Attachment F, I've also included the application for the competitive grant assistance, the competitive grant assistance program, which has a submittal deadline of March 2nd. We did receive a competitive grant, or a grant I should say, under that particular program, I believe it was in 2014. I believe that the total grant that year was about 500 something thousand bucks, but I'll go back and double check that. Actually, it's included in the packet. You should also note that the deadline for applying for DNR Trust Fund and land and water conservation grants is April 1. I want to move on to policy bills. Through Thursday, the 99th Michigan Legislature introduced 2,420 bills. 30 of them had been introduced by your own State Senator David Kneasek, and 12 of them had been introduced by Representative Jones. 277 of those bills have been signed and/or enacted into law. To save a tree, I didn't, I didn't copy those, but I did include the links to the new public acts, as well as to all of the House and Senate bills that have been introduced, so that you can peruse them at your convenience. Here's a terse summary of some of the bills that GCSI deems most important to Inkster. House Bills 5040, 5041, 5043, 5044, and 5046, and Senate Bills 613 and 625, which collectively abolish driver responsibility fees. GCSI aggressively lobbied for this package, which the legislature passed last week, and Governor Snyder is expected to sign into law before the end of the month. Altogether, some 317,000 Michigan drivers owe roughly $600 million in outstanding driver responsibility fees. In Inkster, 2,412 residents, nearly 10% of your city's population, collectively owe $4.5 million, as prescribed in Attachment G. If you look at Attachment G, I highlighted the 48141, believe that y'all, right? 48141, you know? And you can see that the average amount that each of your residents owes, nearly 1,900 bucks. Suffice it to say that that's a weight that's compromised not only people's mobility, but their ability to land meaningful employment as well. So, just know that that was something that we were very vigilant of, and you know, we aggressively lobbied to get rid of that particular fee, and yeah, it's completely gone.
All sold out, okay.
All of it wiped out. House Bill 5013, which sought to overhaul Michigan's no-fault auto insurance law, by 1, giving motorists the choice of purchasing less personal injury protection, recognizing the state law now compels them to buy unlimited PIP. 2, allowing seniors and retirees with lifetime health insurance to opt out of PIP entirely. And 3, imposing a fee schedule on hospitals which routinely charge auto insurers triple what they charge other payers for the same procedure. The measure died on the House floor on November 2nd, meaning that Michiganders for the foreseeable future will continue to pay the highest auto insurance premiums in the country. Senate Bills 111 through 115, which allow locals to create transformational brownfield redevelopment plans, and with state approval, capture state income, use, and sales tax revenue to help subsidize large-scale mixed-use developments. In Inkster, said investment would have to equal $25 million or more. GCSI helped shepherd this package into law. It is now Public Acts 46 through 50 of 2017. Just a little bit of history on that. You all should know that this package was spearheaded by Dan Gilbert, who I believe is interested in building some monstrosity at the site of the old Hudson's. And, but we were like, well, okay, if, if we're gonna do that, there are some smaller communities also that may want to take advantage of transformational brownfields. And I think that in Detroit, you know, the investment has to equal 500 million or more. It scales down depending on the size of the city. City this size, the investment would have to be $25 million or more. House Bill 4044, which seeks to prohibit the sale and use of fireworks in counties with 600,000 or more people absent a local ordinance to allow it. The bill is in House Regulatory Reform Committee. Similarly, House Bill 4196 would allow locals to restrict fireworks sales on certain days and govern such transactions from tents. That bill is also in House Regulatory Reform Committee. Senate Bill 110, which seeks to clarify the municipalities by enacting ordinances to incentivize developers to increase the supply of below-market housing, if they're not violating the Rent Control Act. In Michigan, it is against the law to actually have a rent control ordinance, but if you incentivize people to offer, you know, market-rate homes or, you know, housing, that's not against the law. Or would not be against the law if this bill passes, I should say. And that bill is in Senate Local Government Committee. House Bill 5160, which seeks to amend state law to allow locals to grant a poverty exemption to owner-occupied residences and qualified agricultural property. Bill sponsored by Representative Wendell Byrd from Detroit. The measure would 1, require applicants to affirm their ownership and occupancy of said property on a form that's approved by the state tax commission. And 2, would allow the local board of review to grant the exemption for not only the year it is claimed, but with good cause, the 3 immediately preceding years as well. That bill is in House Tax Policy Committee. Senate Bill 741, which seeks to prohibit locals from enacting ordinances, rules, resolutions, or policies that regulate dogs based on breed. If I'm not mistaken, I saw where you all were actually considering an ordinance, but I don't think your ordinance was breed-specific, so you would be fine. But this particular bill would preclude you from being able to enact an ordinance that was breed-specific. Bill is in Senate Judiciary Committee. House Bill 4814, which seeks to limit all locals to only being able to offer a mileage question on the November general election ballot. That bill is in House Elections and Ethics Committee. To be sure, there are a lot more bills and/or issues that GCSI is monitoring for Inkster, including ones having to deal with human trafficking, medical marijuana, which I'm sure you all are tired of talking about. Regional transit, more stringent lead copper rules. The latter however, hopefully gives you a feel for the breadth and diversity of issues that we're working on for you. In closing, Happy Presidents' Day, Happy Black History Month. Indeed, you all also may want to consider coming to Lansing next week for the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus's annual Black History Month celebration. At that confab, they're gonna be unveiling a portrait of William Webb Ferguson, who was the first African-American elected to the Michigan Legislature, and his will be the first portrait of an African-American to grace the walls of the state Capitol. As usual, I thank you all for your forbearance, and Representative Jones here is happy to answer all of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. You got any questions up here? Sterling, give us plenty of bathroom reading.
Bedtime.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
If we're getting back $3 million revenue sharing, is, that's a constitutional one we've been getting?
It's, it's actually, it's 3.5 million is what the guestimate would be for next year. You will actually, based on forecast, probably get about $43,000 more in FY19 than you're expected to get in FY18, which is the current budget year. The reason being is that state sales tax collections are coming in a little bit more robust than, than they were the immediately preceding state fiscal year. So the constitutional revenue sharing is totally divvied up on a per capita basis. So because the, there's been a little bit of an uptick in the sales tax collections, you know, and your population is holding steady, you're probably gonna see a little bit of a bump in the constitutional. Your statutory, on the other hand, which is the discretionary pot, is gonna remain flat.
I think we'll go back to Harry Mandurin.
Yes, sir.
We went through that at bingo, then we, then they realized. How's that looking from your?
I think it's looking good. Honestly, I mean, I think that 450,000 signatures, that's a lot of signatures. I mean, I think they got probably at least maybe 75 to 100,000 more signatures than they needed. I mean, so.
So they take it to the Michigan Supreme Court to?
No, it's right now before the State Board of Canvassers. So the State Board of Canvassers has to certify basically that the, the signatures are valid, that the signatures are legit. Once they certify that the signatures are legit, that particular initiative, it makes it on the November 6 election ballot. If it makes it on the ballot, I believe that it has a very good chance of passing. And, you know, honestly, I think that it should pass, because I believe that, now this is just me, you know, my commentary, I believe that it's best to have an independent, or a more independent body than partisan lawmakers drawing the lines. I read a, I read a, I read a factoid, and I believe it was in the '16 election, that Democrats statewide for state house collectively got about 400,000 more votes than their Republican challengers or Republican opponents, but actually lost seats, simply because of how the lines are drawn.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What will be your priorities for Inkster in the very near future?
Well, right now, they are the appropriations efforts. Right now, I'm trying to get those resources for a boiler, and I'm trying to get those resources for these cameras that Mayor Nolan and I have talked about for probably about a year now. So I, you know, he's, he's bigger than me, and I don't want him to put me in the headlock, so. But right now, I'm just, you know, that, and also it'd be nice to get the monies for that band shelf. I, I am not terribly optimistic that we're gonna meet with success in trying to get that done in the traditional appropriations process, which is why I'm turning more of my focus to grants, because that tends to be less partisan. I think that we had an opportunity to make a trade. At the end of the day, it just didn't work. I believe that Representative Jones, you know, was feeling a lot of pressure from his leadership, and, you know, the, and the no-fault issue is just a really contentious issue. So at the end of the day, you know, and even if he had, even if he had given the vote, we still, I mean, that, I think at the end of the day, that issue, there were 45 votes, and at the time, we needed 55. I mean, so even if he had given a vote, we still would not have gotten across the finish line. So at the end of the day, we, we just didn't, you know, just didn't come, come together, such that trade was realized. But, you know, politics being politics, I do know that Republican leadership, they're probably not gonna be inclined to give us a victory on something, you know, when we weren't in the position of giving them a vote on this no-fault piece. So, you know, we can try the, the budget process, but I, I believe that we're probably gonna meet with more success going a different route.
The grant route.
Yes, ma'am.
Where, where do we stand with the roads?
With the roads?
Right.
You know, that's a very, a great question, because you all drive Michigan roads just like me, and I have not really experienced any appreciable difference. But the governor, I believe, one of the reasons that he is proposing $325 million in this year's budget is to accelerate road spending, because the 2015 roads proposal that did pass, it called for in the coming fiscal year, $150 million being spent, all right? Well, because we had the lapsed money, I believe the governor is worried about a number of things, not least of which is his legacy. He's like, okay, well, I wanna glom onto some of that lapsed money, put it with the 150 million that I was already committed to spend in the '19 fiscal year, and see if we can accelerate some improvements to Michigan's infrastructure. We'll see, you know, I, I, I think it's a good idea, you know, personally, especially when I look and see that, you know, your city, which right now gets about 2 million bucks, you can almost double that, you know, and go from 2 million to 3.4, so. I like it, you know, personally, so.
Anybody else?
I guess, first about the roads also. So they're giving this, they're giving $2 million now to maintain municipal roads. So that's like our local road?
Yes, sir.
Think we can double that?
You go from, based on what the governor proposed, because if you look at Act 51, there's nothing about this proposal that changes the, the distribution formula. So the distribution formula is prescribed in Public Act 51 of 1951.
Okay.
So there's nothing about what the governor proposed that's changing the distribution methodology, it's just simply adding more money. So if you look at what Inkster currently receives, and you run that $325 million in new money through the exact same distribution methodology, it's just spit out another $1.4 million to the city of Inkster for your roads. So you would grow from 2 million to 3.4. So that's a pretty, in my opinion, I think that's a pretty, pretty good day at the office.
Did they say it costs a million to fix Hamlin?
I know, where's the Hamlin was about, it was about a million, was it? A little under a million, maybe. It was a million. And that's what?
So. Yeah, right.
I thought the, the, the. Something with the gap.
Oh, we're working on that.
Yeah, but Wes' name?
Yeah. You're doing the joint venture with Wes. Any other questions for Mr. Cole? All right, well, thank you, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I do. Do you, do you have, ever have an opportunity to have citizens come to hearings?
Absolutely. If you want to come up to Lansing, it's a, it's a boring ride.
I don't mean to just sit.
No.
I mean to testify.
Absolutely. If you want to come and testify, you let me know. And, well. With all that pink and green up there, I think that we may, you know, she may be my sorority sister, anyway.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. As far as the gas tax, they raised the gas tax, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be the increase that we will be receiving for roads, right?
Okay, yes, ma'am. So in 2015, Michigan did a number of things. We increased the gas tax, we indexed it to inflation. We also increased vehicle registration fees, all right? We did a number of things. But the, okay, so, so those monies that are associated with that, the deal called, the deal that, that ended up passing was probably a deal that, I'm going from memory, but it was from like FY2018, which is the current budget year we're in, through like FY25. And every one of those years, there was an earmark of a select or a select amount of money that was gonna be spent. So for FY2019, the earmark was supposed to be 150 million bucks, all right? That's what we're supposed to be spending in addition to previous road spending. So right now, you have a Michigan Transportation Fund. Michigan Transportation Fund is roughly 2 billion, all right? About 600 million of that goes to cities, villages, and townships. Another 600 million goes to counties, and the balance goes to the state, all right? What we did when we increased the gas tax, we basically generated new money. Didn't change the distribution methodology, just new money, all right? So 150 million worth of new money is set to be spent in FY19, already been predetermined. We finished the last fiscal year, which is 2017 fiscal year. The state fiscal year runs from October 1 through September 30. So we finished the 2017 fiscal year on September 30. And when we finished that fiscal year, it was determined that we had 280 million dollars that just lapses back to the general fund. It was unspent. The departments, they did a good job. They didn't spend all the money that was appropriated to them. And that money, when it lapses back to the general fund, it lapses back unattached, it's unencumbered. So what the governor has proposed is taking 200 million of that 280 million to put with the 150 million that was already in new money that's supposed to be spent in FY19, so that we can have a total, actually, he's not taking a total 200, I think it's 175 million. So 200, 325 million dollars is what he wants to spend in FY19. It, I don't know if I, does that make sense? All right, cool. So, yeah, and see, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't pick on you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you, appreciate you coming. Okay. Public hearing.
A public hearing to apply for Wayne County 2018, 2019 Community Development Black Grant Funding in the amount of $216,477.
You have a motion?
Go move.
Support.
Probably move supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Ms. Fleming? Can you tell the people what this is about, the public?
It's our Community Development Black Grant Funds that we apply to from the county.
Microphone, microphone.
Hi. So this, these are our Community Development Black Grant Funds that municipalities in Wayne County apply to the county and other areas as well. The county collectively applies for that funding from HUD. So the money comes from HUD, is dispersed to Wayne County, and then is dispersed, or given to the communities within that county. So we apply to Wayne County, or are applying to Wayne County. So we apply to Wayne County, or are applying to Wayne County to receive two hundred sixteen thousand dollars in community development block grant funds. And the funds have specific activities that the funding can be used for, so it's for administration costs, public services, which goes to the summer temporary employees, which clean, uh, they, grass cutters, they do debris removal, um, and just general weed around the area and vacant lots. We have demolition funds, which are used to demo, uh, ho- houses and buildings that are on our recommended demolition list. And we also have home repair funds, which go for code violation, emergencies, as well as hazardous areas and individuals' homes in the city of Inkster. It's like a roof. Like a roof repair or something of that sort of individuals that will apply for the funding. The additional funding that would be given, if any additional funding was given outside of the two hundred sixteen thousand, will go to our additional demolition within the city.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so you're welcome to come up to the mic, state your name, and give a comment or a question. Come on, Reverend Williams. Okay. Go ahead and ask while we're waiting on Reverend Williams.
Okay, I just wanted to ask her, it was my understanding that the administrative costs were no longer a part of that, because Wayne County had taken over itself in, uh, administering that? Is that not the case anymore?
No, so the administration will go for staff here, for, uh, for any type of administration that was given toward demolition, or given to rehab funds, going to the individuals' houses and meeting with the contractors of that sort. But the county does administer, take care of the administrative aspect from HUD.
And that's that ten percent that used to be included?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Reverend Williams?
I, I just had some questions I would like to ask you, uh, because long years ago, when we used to talk about getting some of the block grant money for youth activities, it was always hot about we could not do it. But as I met a group that are using them same funds throughout Wayne County in the city of Detroit, is there a difference in the city of Detroit than it is out here in the city of Inkster?
Yes. The city of Detroit isn't included in the Wayne County Community Development Block Grant. Um, so it's like their own separate entity for community development block grant funds.
They got their own separate?
Yes.
Account?
Yes.
That is really ridiculous.
You look sleepy.
That's all right, that's all right, she's young.
So I, I heard you say that, that.
State your name, please.
Oh, Owen Roper. Uh, that part of the monies are for, like, citizens that need roof repair?
Yes.
How would they, how do they tap into it?
So they will have to go through an application process, um, and it's various forms that they would fill out, they have to go through SHIBO, which is basically, um, Housing Environmental, just to be sure, uh, what, and they have to go through the building inspection as well to be sure that they have, um, a, a emergency or a home repair that falls within the category repair. And the city receives twenty-five thousand dollars in total, um, for, I believe we're applying for twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the entire city. So we would go by not necessarily priority, uh, but it has to be, either be an emergency, hazardous, or a code violation in order to qualify for home repair.
Okay, so is that also for businesses or just residents?
Just residents, owner-occupied houses.
Okay.
We're applying for seventy-five thousand, my.
Seventy-five thousand, it used to be twenty-five. Any other comments or questions in the public hearing? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Or?
They're properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Concerned agenda? Anybody had a chance to look at? Do we have a motion?
That motion we accept. Does the agenda as presented?
Support.
They're properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Boards and commissions.
We, we have some, uh, appointments to vote on today. We were, Mr. Steve Chisholm, he missed orientation, but, uh, we know we have two folks from your district who have, uh, we received resumes on for Parks and Recs. Who, who was the other one? I think Luana.
Oh, that's right, Luana and Owen.
And then Owen Roper.
And then we need to revisit the, um, DDA situation as well.
DDA?
Yeah.
DDA.
Downtown Development.
Now who was already nominated for Parks and Recs?
I don't think anybody was nominated.
James Richardson Jr.
Okay. And we received it, so are we ready? Do we have a motion to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Make a motion to, to vote on James Richardson, be appointed to the Parks and Recs Commission Board.
They're properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
What district is that?
Aye. Let's get in the house.
Now how are you handling the mo, cause you have multiple folks, I saw an email where you have five people interested, but we have two resumes and applications. So how are you handling the nomination?
That's a good question.
Not to put you in a spot, eh?
You're the bad guy.
I only nominate one.
Right, right.
Nominate who's best.
Because everybody had an opportunity to look over the, uh, resumes and who was the best qualified. Yeah, I know.
I mean, yeah, that's a tough one.
Yeah. And I, I, I think, I know one of them probably did, just because of they utilized the parks for everything, and I think mainly, you know, she wanted to be involved just because they could kinda have a say-so, if you will, possibly, I don't know. Um, I haven't actually.
You talking about Westwood Park?
Westwood.
What Inkster bingles practicing?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah. I did receive a request for us to talk about that too, but I guess we'll do that staff meeting tomorrow, then we'll bring it back to council. They want us to help redo the bathrooms and some other things to get it ready for practice next year, cause they practice on it. Um, okay, so, we're ready to proceed, it's, it's just a matter of, I don't know how, I don't know how, I've never been in that situation.
I haven't either.
But.
Is there a limit on the number of people that can sit on the Parks and Recs Commission?
Yeah.
I am members.
Aye.
Each district. So I guess you need to come up with something, flip a coin, do something. We gotta vote on something? Yeah, we can vote on both, but if the first one passes, we can't vote on the second, because we have no more space. Who, who turned it in first?
Well, I mean, that's, that's your call, I ain't.
I know we're all trying to be fair, but that's, I guess it's up to you.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, will draw my name.
Okay.
Well, we have one.
Make the motion.
One.
Go move.
Okay.
Support.
They're properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Then the DDA situation.
Okay.
So, ladies and gentlemen, at the last meeting where we voted, we voted to appoint, and we did not vote to, I'm sorry, we voted to nominate, we did not vote to appoint. It's on recording, so for clarity purposes, we need to vote to appoint tonight, um, Angela Dotson for the position of Downtown Development Authority.
Okay, everybody remember that situation? We're just redoing it, essentially.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Go move.
Support.
They're properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Any other nominations for boards and commissions? Nothing? Okay. All right, we'll move on to previous business. We talked about this at orientation, is there a motion to remove from the table?
Motion to remove. Make a motion to remove the previous.
Do you, if you want it removed from the table, we kinda talked about we're gonna just kinda let it die, so she can continue, she can check it out, but we'll still move forward with.
But we don't have to do anything, you know?
No, we don't.
It's gonna die if you don't do it, okay? Right.
Okay, see, here no motion, that, that matter is over. All right, we move on to first reading.
A first reading of a map amendment to the city zoning map to rezone sixty-five parcels along Dunning and Plum Streets, from R one B one family residential zoning to M one light industrial zoning. A second first reading of text amendments to the city's zoning ordinance pertaining to security camera and buffer distance requirements for medical marijuana facilities per the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Can we have a second reading?
A second reading and approval for amendments to the Inkster Code of Ordinances, being sections nine one point two one through nine one point three three. Ordinance to regulate the implementation of procedural regulations and guidelines for the appropriate disposition of vicious animals within the city of Inkster, and to establish penalties for violations of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion?
Go move.
Support.
They're properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. New business.
Consideration and approval of an offer to purchase eighteen residential properties.
Uh, that's a lot of addresses. Did everybody have a copy of the agenda?
Eight, okay, as duly noted, in the total amount of eighteen dollars. To Platinum Real Estate Holding LLC, Anthony Ria.
Do we have a motion?
Go move.
Support.
They're properly moved and supported, discussion.
It's here. For a dollar, that's awfully low, the quantity we have in the history of so, anybody a property for a dollar. I understand that these are properties that we're going to be tearing down if we do not sell them. So if we tear them down, basically, we'll be charging them what the lot is.
If we tear them down, it's gonna cost us about fifteen thousand per house. You times, you times eighteen, and we eliminate the tax base. So they'll never pay taxes, or, well, as far as the dwelling taxes, again, they'll wear vacant lots.
You saying that, um, saying that we've been charging for vacant land something more than this? I just don't want to start a president's now of selling property for a dollar.
But a vacant land, though, we get limited taxes on. We sell a property for a dollar, he has to put thirty thousand, twenty-five thousand to each property, then we get taxes on the value of the home. So for us, it's a win. I'm interested, it sound, it looks, sounds funny to buy a house for a dollar, but, right now, we're getting nothing. These houses, we would be required to tear down, so we would have to spend money versus collecting tax money. So it's kinda, you know.
Doctor, I'm just saying, we need to.
You want two dollars?
Actually, five.
You want amended to five dollars?
I understand, I'm.
Yeah.
I've made this one, if we're selling some, something on, oh. Fact that we're doing this, and we understand the benefits, it's, it's hard giving away stuff.
Y'all must not go to the dollar store.
No.
I'm always going to the dollar store. Remember, I'm economically conscious and I shop Inkster.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, that's true. All right, anything else, any? All right, any other questions? Okay, y'all ready? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Item B, consider approval of an offer to purchase one residential parcel of land located on the north side of Norfolk Street between Sylvia Street and Princess Ave, formerly known as two six nine four two Norfolk, and is duly noted as described in the total amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to Global Breakthrough LLC.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
You got support?
Support.
They're properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Public participation. Officer Wall, come on down.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, just to touch on, since our very informative lobbyist brought it up, we have the vicious animal, vicious animal ordinance that passed this evening. Um, I just wanted to give further information about what we're doing as code enforcement in the city with regards to the animals, um, that need to be licensed. Anybody who owns a dog, those dogs needs to be, need to be licensed, and Officer Lebo can attest to the fact of how many dog runs the police respond to. Um, we need to know that those dogs are safe, not only for our officials, but for, um, the residents in the area as well. And in, in an effort to get those dogs licensed, um, code enforcement was able to procure six pallets of dog food. And with every license that's issued, um, the clerk's office has a box to distribute these packets of dog food. Um, we also wanted to add that because there is so much of it, if anyone has an issue with, um, feeding their animal after it's been licensed, we have additional, um, bags of food at the police department that will be issued as well. And all they need to do is bring their current license. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Officer Lebo.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Few things to talk, oh, thanks, sorry, me. Few things to talk about, very exciting first announcement, is the, uh, we're going to be having an Easter egg hunt this year. Now, this Easter egg hunt is in partnership with the Inkster Task Force Unit of the Community Campaign, hosted by the Inkster Task Force, Inkster Police Department, the Service Builders Foundation of the AKAs, uh, Inkster Parks and Recreation, Operation Refuge, Starfish Family Services, and the Inkster Community Foundation. So it's a collaborative effort, um, to basically try and combine all these little events that we have into one big event, pool our resources, pool our money, make it one really cool thing to do. So I do have flyers over there, it is going to be Saturday, March thirty-first, from eleven AM to two PM, at the Booker Dozer Recreation Complex. Some of the activities we're gonna have on top of the Easter egg hunt is, um, with prizes, selfies with the Easter egg bunny, Easter egg bunny, I'm sorry, selfies with the Easter bunny. Face painting, arts and crafts, games, and more. We also have light refreshments, and we, believe we did get a commitment from Father Cliffs and in St. Clement's to donate some hot dogs.
I don't see it.
So, you know it. But it's gonna be a really great time, it's gonna be so much fun, we are, do have a registration, however, on Eventbrite. Please register by March twenty-first, we kinda have an idea of how many kids to expect. It's going to be open from, so ages zero to twelve years old. Details available on Eventbrite, just search Inkster Easter Egg Hunt, also on the department's Facebook page, and I'll be putting flyers all over the city. A few other things, uh, this Thursday, February twenty-second, from six to eight PM, we're going to be having Inkster Youth Community Forum. This is a partnership between the Inkster Police Department and Michigan State Police to basically have an open conversation about how to improve our interaction between law enforcement and youth, people in general. So everybody's encouraged to attend, it's gonna be an open conversation, a lot of MSP troopers will be there, some Inkster police, talk about what we can do to improve our interactions, make people a little bit happier when we are together.
Date again, please?
That would be Thursday, this Thursday, February twenty-second, from six to eight PM, at the Recreation Complex. Day before that, this Wednesday, February twenty-first, the bake sale, goes without saying, please, please, please come, all of that money is going to be used toward the Easter egg hunt. So, I would appreciate your patronage. Um, ten AM to two PM, uh, this Wednesday, the bake sale. And, also, old business, but also new, um, March thirteenth will be the next Coffee with a Cop, ten AM, Applewood Coney. We had our last Coffee with a Cop this past, um, Monday, I'm sorry, this past Tuesday, and and it was awesome. We had a really, really great conversation, we had a good turnout, I think about fourteen people turned up, which is pretty decent for a good first time around. We talked about a lot of different topics, such as the drop in crime rate in Inkster, how to change the public perception of the city of Inkster, what we can do to get the word out to the masses about all the positive things that we have coming out of our city. Um, Aaron Sims talked about initiative to put together a IPD, how many are talking to you, IFD versus the youth kickball game, what community resources are available to our citizens and how we spread the word, and also about the public forum coming up. So it's really just an open conversation, we have a cup of coffee and we talk about whatever's on anybody's mind, no agenda, so please join us, March thirteenth, ten AM.
Ten AM.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reverend Williams, we need you to bring some kids to the Easter egg hunt. Just put you on notice, now.
Easter egg hunt.
February twenty-seventh.
No, Easter egg hunt is gonna be March thirty-first.
March twenty-first.
Thirty-first.
The day before Easter Sunday.
Somebody please remind him. Okay, Pastor Gene Overman.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, just, uh, some updates, as you know, the banquet was canceled due to the snowstorm, so we are hosting this Saturday at, uh, the Sheraton at six o'clock. So the scholarship banquet is back on, so those of you that purchased your tickets, we expect to see you this Saturday, six PM in Ann Arbor. Uh, also, this Thursday, the fourth Thursday, we'll be T-FAP at Mother's Pantry at ten AM, and we're looking for volunteers, so please come out and support, thank you.
State Representative Jill Jones, we skipped over you, do you have anything?
Yes.
You falling asleep like Reverend Williams.
Well, good, uh, good evening, mayor, council, uh, citizens. Uh, I do have just a few announcements, and also, as you can see, I have on the Inkster shirt, um, so we have, uh, some young people that just bought, uh, property right next to Love's Barbecue, um, at, uh, ten sixty-five Inkster Road. I think it's called The Heart of the City, um, it's a store they're getting ready to open up, so make sure that you get out there and support them, I think they'll be opened up before March first. Uh, but, um, a few other announcements, this Chamber of Commerce mixer is next, uh, next Wednesday, um, at six PM, the tickets are forty dollars and, uh, the tables are three hundred dollars if they have not already, uh, started reaching out to you all about, um, purchasing tickets for that event. Um, and also just to piggyback on, uh, our lobbyist Ken Cole about the unveiling of the portion of Representative William Ferguson, uh, is next, uh, Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, from five to seven PM, if anyone needs accommodations, uh, get in there, I mean, it's free and open to the public, so if anyone would like to come, uh, please come out. Uh, and also, the DIA has an exclusive, um, exhibit for African art, uh, history this month, um, and that's also open to all Wayne, Oakland, and McComb County residents. Since Ken Cole went over most of the, uh, past legislation, I'll give you all some updates what's coming up this week, and also some new, um, state agency news. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is having new rules for, um, people receiving food assistance, um, so they're changing up, um, the, the requirements to make you, uh, required to work a twenty-hour work week, and so, uh, there's a few exemptions, uh, that, that come with it, um, so you can get out of working a twenty-hour work week and still receive food assistance if, um, you're in an employee training program, or you're in a GED program, or if you're volunteering to provide community service, uh, or if you're disabled and receiving social security, um, insurance, or if you're pregnant, or, uh, enrolled in a drug and alcohol treatment program, or if you have a child under the age of six. Uh, so there's some bills coming up this week, um, in regards to the Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Act, um, and that'll be Senate Bill four nineteen, Senate Bill four twenty, and Senate Bill four twenty-one, and basically it's gonna be amending the Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Act to, uh, create, um, a board, uh, which is currently located in Department of Health and Human Services, but, um, this board's responsibility will be, um, providing the coordination, exchange of information on establishment and maintenance of prevention programs. Uh, so what's good about this is that each year, this, uh, the state of Michigan, uh, removes thousands of children from their parents, but this isn't good, but this is what's good about the legislation, um, by creating this board, is that, um, each year Michigan removes thousands of children from their parents because of poverty and a perceived neglect, um, place them into foster care, foster care, but this bill will stave off some of these unnecessary removals. Um, the only thing is that, uh, the time it takes from this legislation becoming law, uh, might be dragged out due to, uh, election year and, and, uh, lame duck coming up, so, um, pe, a lot of people are interested in it coming up soon, but it, it might be a little slow. Um, there's also a House Bill fifty-three, fifty-five, uh, and this bill will be amending the Public School Retirement Act to accelerate, accelerate the payment of unfunded actuarial accrual liability, um, using a, a level dollar, uh, schedule, and so this is gonna pay, this is gonna speed up the paydown of the, uh, unfunded actuarial accrual liability, uh, for school employees and potentially increase assets in the school retirement investment portfolio. Um, however, local school districts may be required to pay some of these increases, and so that means that it's gonna be less money into some of the school budgets, um, which is kinda concerning. Um, there's also Hou, House Bill fifty-two thirty and fifty-two thirty-one, uh, and this is gonna be amending the Public School Employees Retire Act and the State Employees Retire Act, um, and it's gonna basically allow these systems to offer, uh, annuities to their members. Um, so the annuity providers will be selected through a competitive bid process, um, and they must meet specific financial strength, uh, and other requirements. Uh, what's good about this is that the annuities are good and safe long-term savings and income vehicles, and that should be explored in everyone's portfolio, uh, as these employees get older. However, uh, this, this push could be used, uh, to, to push these certain members into, uh, this annuity, um, and they'll be eliminating other portfolio options which, uh, could, uh, potentially end the defined contribution, defined, uh, defined benefit system. Uh, but besides that, uh, there's not a whole lot coming up this week, and I know, uh, I've been hearing, when I was, I seen my mother, uh, yesterday, I believe, and she was ta, talking about The Biggest Loser, uh, so I don't have too much information about that, uh, Ms. Felicia, but if you can, um, tell them about that, that'd be cool, but, uh, keep up the good work, Happy Black History Month, uh, y'all stay, uh, on the, oh.
Can we ask something?
Of course, you can ask a question.
In reference to the, um, the requirement to, to twenty hours, we, it, that's not passed, that's a bill that's being offered.
No, that's not, that's not a bill, that's, uh, that's a state agency update, so that's happening.
Oh, that's happening, and when you say food assistance, you're talking about people with bridge cards?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So the thing we feared all along is beginning to happen, right?
Right.
These social programs that are so important to people are being, begin to be eliminated, or you have to qualify.
Right, you have to qualify for them, and, and some, and some of the, the exemptions from it are, are completely doable, um, if you go up to, uh, City Hall or somewhere in the community and just do some volunteer service hours or something like that, you're able to be exempted, um, yeah, at Mother's Pantry, anywhere, and so I think that it's reasonable, um, the, the only issue is that we're gonna have to make sure we get the word out, so people aren't just, you know, caught off guard with it, so that's about it, and so that's, that becomes an issue, does the state, is, is the Department of Health and Human Services really gonna do a good job by getting, getting that information out?
Right, and how do they go about, I mean, is there some sort of process, someone's in place, say, yes, you did do this, or yes, you didn't do that?
I think that that'll probably be some kind of application, you'll probably have to be, you're gonna have to apply to be exempted, um, and then show proof of, of, uh, whatever reasons you're trying to get exempted for, so, uh, I don't think that it'll be difficult, it just depends on how we get the word out, so people actually know that you have to apply to be exempted from the programs. So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Uh, questions about retirement and annuities, now, annuities for people who are currently still working, or for people who are retired?
This is for the people that are currently in the system.
Working.
Yeah.
They're working?
Right.
Okay, so, so they're trying to get away from the 401K, having the annuities?
That, that's, that's kinda the, the interpretation, that's not how they're, they're spinning the conversation, but, um, that could be something that could potentially happen.
What's your take on that?
Uh, I think that it is, is good, 'cause you're diversifying some of the portfolio options, but, I mean, in terms of if it's actually a push to, uh, get rid of the defined contribution, defined benefit system, uh, that might be, that's, that's concerning, but...
They're putting it all on the employee.
Right, and, and that's been a lot, what, what they've been doing, even with the, the insurance bill, House Bill fifty thirteen, a lot of the legislation that coming up with now is trying to give people more options, and so it seems good to give people options, but ultimately, these, these options are, you know, gonna change, it's like a slower process of change in some of the laws that they, they've been trying to change for a long time.
But, yes, they have the option of their 401K?
Yes. So.
401K savings plan.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
That's it? All right, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Um, as Representative Jones said, that Ms. Octavia and the Western Lane Family Health Center is doing a Biggest Loser Challenge that will begin March first, um, through April twelfth, and the entry fee is twenty dollars, so if anyone is interested in losing weight wisely, please contact, uh, Ms. Octavia at three, one, three, four, seven, eight, three, zero, four, zero, extension one thirty-nine. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Treasurer.
Um, as everyone was aware, a week ago this past weekend, we had a snow emergency, um, pretty much throughout the entire weekend, and just want to remind all the residents, anytime there's a snow emergency, one of the key requirements is for all cars to be removed off the street in order to allow the, um, Department of Public Services in order, uh, to allow them to, uh, properly plow the street. Um, the city had to tow a number of cars, and, um, you know, whenever we declare that snow emergency, we try and make sure word is out, we just wanna make sure residents understand, um, that the cars do have to be off the street, uh, during the entire time of the snow emergency, makes it really difficult for the streets to get plowed if cars aren't, uh, removed. Um, the other thing, um, one reminder, it's only during a snow emergency is the only time when all streets, um, including side streets are plowed. If there's not a snow emergency, we only, uh, are gonna plow the, you know, the more major streets as well as emergency route, so, um, and that's just, you know, just from the standpoint of us being able to properly manage all of our resources, uh, but we wanna thank all the residents that, that helped out this last snow emergency and, um, the patience that was required, 'cause, 'cause it does take time in order for the city to get around to all the streets. Um, as always, if there's ever any, uh, reports that folks need to make, you can call over to Department of Public Services, and also, uh, we encourage people to utilize the See, Click, Fix application, I think a number of people used that this last time, so.
Quite a few.
I'm sorry.
Quite a few.
Okay. Um, and then lastly, on a, on a better note, uh, we have the, um, property tax deadline coming up, um, a week, why is everybody laughing?
Better for who?
It's opportu, we, we still have time, um, uh, February twenty-eighth is the deadline for us to accept payments for property taxes both summer and winter, after that time, the taxes are, are, uh, formally become delinquent, so, uh, we encourage people to make, make those payments, you can come here to City Hall, we have the drop box outside of City Hall as well, as you can make payments online, so, thank you.
All right, thanks. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Yes?
Closing your mugs.
Hello, everyone. I just have one announcement, and that is that the Inkster Community Block Club, of which I am a member, and the secretary, uh, will be returning to the Inkster landscape after a brief hiatus, and our meeting will be tomorrow evening, uh, February twentieth, at the Woodson Community Center, located at two, nine, one, one, five, Carlisle, at Middlebelt. The meeting will begin at six o'clock PM, so we hope that you will take the time to come out, we don't care where you live, if you wanna be a member of a block club, we open our doors to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Oden.
Thank you, mayor. Um, District Two Advisory Committee meetings, we held tomorrow at six o'clock at the Fox Recreation Department, invited from our district, come on out, join us, help us, you know, with getting things together within the district and the city in general. Also, I'd like to note that, uh, the Middle Park Manor Block Club held their Black History Program, uh, a week or so ago, well-attended, had a number of people who came out, gave out projects and different activities, in addition to, um, very good food, paid everybody, really nice. I just wanted to, uh, mention the, good job.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Wiley.
Um, I'd just like to remind everyone that, uh, the planning for the Memorial Day Parade is in full swing, your, um, applications, if you wish to participate in the parade, you can pick them up at the city clerk's office, or you can pick them up at the rec center. Um, in an effort to go green where these are concerned, 'cause you have a lot of paperwork left over, um, you ask at the clerk's office, we had them set out before at the clerk office and the, uh, rec center, but we ended up with a lot of paper afterwards, 'cause we was trying to make sure everybody got one, so this time, you come to the clerk's office and you say you'd like a packet, she'll download, make a copy for you right then and there, so we won't be wasting a lot of paper, and the same, we've, uh, the same thing has happened with the Dozier complex, I've talked with, uh, Craig Lewis, and they'll be doing the same, so you have to ask for it and they'll download it for you to keep from having stacks of paper. Yes, ma'am?
Do you have a link for us to download it as well?
Oh, sure, it's on the, um, it's on the website.
There is a website?
Yeah, and, um, if you email me, I can email you one, so it's not a problem getting the paperwork, the problem getting it back, no, I'm just kidding. Okay, so, um, just to remind everyone, 'cause we're, uh, trying to make this one, uh, more successful than the last. Um, also, every fourth Thursday at five o'clock, I'm here for a District Three Advisory, uh, Board Meeting, uh, every fourth Thursday, um, of the month, and at five o'clock, and you can come out, anybody, you don't just have to be from District Three, and discuss issues or concerns you may have, because one of the things we're trying to do is come together, so we all know what each other's doing and we can support each other in those efforts. I think that's...
Is the doors here, is all meetings are here?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard. Councilman Chisholm.
Right, there's three things, um, as always, it's the season of Lent, so you know what that means, St. Clement's is selling fish dinners, Monday, Sunday, Wednesday night, six to eight PM, so after you're long, nice evening here at council meeting, your appetite's built up, run right on over to the church and get you a dinner. Um, also, the play for human trafficking is coming up, it's called A Dream Deferred, again, that's our partnership with Stacy Johnson, playwright, she's been working in the community with us for a few years now on different plays and everything, we are working with the police department with this, um, this is a big topic across the nation, especially within Inkster, because it's so close to the freeways and everything, a lot of stuff just goes unknown, because we don't know the signs and everything like that of human trafficking, so this is a great opportunity for citizens to get out, uh, it, it, I think it's PG thirteen, I can't recall right now, but if you would like, you know, for youth and young adults to attend and get more information on what's going on as well, it's a perfect time, that date is April twenty-eighth at six PM, there will be like a talk back question to ask, uh, opportunity after the play, and it will be at Robesha High School. And the last thing, and then I'll let the mayor speak on that more, I did attend the memorial service for one of our citizens who suddenly passed away, Sandy Belkry, she was in District Four, uh, that was this past Wednesday, I believe it was, so, just wanted to get that word out, uh, Officer Wall has shared some information, um, about Sandy Belkry online as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Uh, have a couple of things, um, I attended the coffee hour with a state senator and, um, our county commissioner, and some citizens had some concerns about the lights on Michigan Avenue, like, they're wondering when we're gonna get the new LDD lighting on Michigan Avenue, I know it's somewhere in the pipeline.
We didn't do all the Michigan Avenue, we had a year, um, we said it's, uh, they called it here.
Harrison.
Um, then they had concerns about plowing the sidewalk in front of Inkster Valley, uh, golf course, even though the golf course is closed right now, but I guess a lot of people walk up and down Michigan Avenue, I mean, Middlebelt, and another issue came up was, uh, right up on the viaduct on Michigan Av, sorry, on Middlebelt and Inkster Road, uh, the county had put those, those walkways through, and the first year we had them put through, I'm not saying who did it, but they did get, the sidewalks did get plowed that first year, they haven't been plowed since then, but we, you know, we lobbied to have those, those sidewalks put there, you know, for people will be walking in the street in the snow, uh, for their safety, um, if we have another snow, can be looking to, uh, see might have been those sidewalks plowed.
Okay.
Now, the golf course, they on their own, and, as usual, shoppingster.
All right, thank you. Okay, just to piggyback on what the treasurer was talking about, the snow emergency, we call a snow emergency when it's six inches or more of snow, typically, now, if it's some special situation, we will obviously send the alert out, but typically six inches or more. I wanna thank everybody for blowing my phone up that weekend.
They called.
Facebook messaging, I mean, it was, 'cause everybody wanted their street plowed at that particular moment, which I understand, people trying to get to work, trying to do stuff, I was wearing Jerome Biff's phone out, I was like, look at me, you need to get to this street, you need to go to this street.
So you hit all of us, didn't you?
Oh, man. And then after one...
You didn't?
I'm calling every about ten minutes.
One lady called, she said, hey, I, I need to get to work, my, my car, she had a low-profile car, so she couldn't get through the snow, so we claimed them, came and plowed the street, she said, thank you, then she reached out to me about a half an hour... And she reached out to me about a half an hour later, she's like, look, can you come over here and now move the snow out the end of my driveway? And I sat there and thought about that for a minute, you know, you just want to go out and help people, like, this is going to be a bad precedent. You know? But then she texts me back, let me off the hook, she said, one of her neighbors helped to get the snow out of the way. I was relieved because that was a lot of snow. So, you know, I'm glad people are using See Click Fix because it's a good way to get the information out, but, you know, everybody feel free to contact any of us, you know, when you need assistance. Also, I noticed, I was just perusing Facebook yesterday, I noticed the Dearborn Heights Democratic Club is doing a Meet the Candidate. You know, it's a lot of candidates running for the 13 district congressional seat, and it's hard to get all of them in one spot because it's at least 12 of them, you know? So maybe we should, a couple of us should roll over there and piggyback their event and listen to what they have to say. I've been getting phone calls, it's going to, it's going to be on March 12th on a Monday, is that a council meeting? No, it shouldn't be. At the Canfield Center, 1801 North Beach Daily at 7:00 p.m.
North Beach.
Yeah. They're having a Meet the Candidates.
Is it for the 13th, it's not just the people running in their area?
No, no, they're, we're in the same area.
Yeah.
So it's a good opportunity for this to get out. I've been getting a lot of letters, people asking for support. People send me a letter, ask for support, I've never met them before, you know? So I want to get out and hear them all talk and hear what they have to say. They've been coming around, some folks have been coming around, and we've been, had a chance to listen to them talk a little bit, so I'm looking forward to that.
What happened to our Meet the Candidates thing that was programmed, the team that we had, with the calling, Meet the Candidates, where they come in and talk?
You know my voice? Yeah.
When we were running, when they were running the election back then, they had created a.
Voice.
Voice, yeah, what happened to Voice? We're not having it. A lot of them people come in and dressed as people of Inkster.
Yeah.
People of Inkster, the ones that need to let us know.
But I'm curious to see what they say when they're talking to people at Dearborn Heights being from Inkster, to see if it's the same story, you know? I just want to see what they say to them, and then, of course, we're going to have, they're going to come talk to us.
Oh, yeah. They've started already.
They already have.
But we, that's going to take a little organizing just because there's so many of them. You want to get as many as you can so we can make an informed decision. But we're, and we're trying to stick together as a community because I think we have more power. So let's check these people out, let's discuss who we're going to support, and let's support, all support one person as much as we can, because otherwise, if you scatter them, you know?
That's right.
You stay together, then they have to come deal with you and listen to you.
That's what they're betting on, that we're going to really scatter the vote.
So I'm looking forward to that, but if anybody has a chance, let's go check them out. And I'm sure, I've already had one conversation with one of the members of Voice, and they're talking about organizing something here. So I want to go see how that goes in Dearborn Heights and then.
What's that address again?
1801 North Beach Daily. Canfield Center.
We got a planning commission meeting that night.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, we, we probably.
Just getting off the bench one minute. What happened to the light where the, by the park, where the lights is not on? And I know you seen a couple of bikes the other day.
Which part?
Oh, yeah, the street light is out.
Oh, it is? For the trailway?
Right. Jerome said to do it.
You talking about John Daly?
No, it's the road. The new street light at, at the park, at the walkway.
Oh, the, the.
The light is out.
That's not ours.
But it's the county light.
That's the county.
That's the county light.
We appreciate the consideration. Officer Lebo.
Jerome was saying, I'm glad.
Okay, then you know about. Okay, great. All right, everybody, it's been beautiful.
Okay, the location.
Got a motion there?
Motion for adjournment.
Board, the move is supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Who's next?